Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County for candidates for Snohomish County Council Districts 4 and 5. I am your moderator, Jody Troutwine. I'm the outgoing Voter Services Chair of the Snohomish League. The candidates are for the council districts and for District 4 are Jared Mead and Brenda Carrington. For District 5 are Sam Low and Brandy Donna-Gee. And Brenda Carrington is not participating in this forum. The League thanks all the candidates for running for office, for their willingness to serve the community if elected, and for participating in the forum. It is the policy of the League to be nonpartisan, therefore we neither endorse nor oppose the candidates or parties. We do take positions on issues which we have studied and on which we have reached consensus. The ground rules for this forum were sent ahead of time to all candidates. And let me briefly explain the question and answer period rules. Opening and closing questions have been shared with the candidates. Other questions have not been shared, however, we have made each candidate aware of issue areas this forum is likely to cover. And we thank all the community members who sent us recommendations about local issues. I will pose the questions. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond, and 90 seconds will be allowed for answers to the final question. I will state this change at that time. We are using a countdown timer visible to all candidates. It shows elapsed time and alerts candidates when there are 15 seconds left. And when time is up, time limits on answers will be strictly enforced. When you see the timer turn red and hear the chime, you are done. I will change the starting order for each question rotating through all the candidates to ensure a random and fair sequence. The order for the first question will be to begin with Mr. Mead, and then I will go through the other two candidates. All right. Question number one, what qualification and experience make you a strong candidate for this position? Mr. Mead?
Thank you for the question, and I first just want to thank the first question, thank the League for putting on this. I enjoy these every year, and it's a shame that we have to wait till we're on the ballot to do these because I learn something every time. So thank you all for putting this on, and thank you, Jody, for being our moderator, and for last year being our moderator, which you ran very smoothly, so I appreciate that. I expect the same result this time. So what makes me a great candidate for this position? Well, one, I've been fortunate enough to be in this role now for the last year and a half. I was appointed in April of last year. Before that, I served in the state legislature for two years, and before that, I was on the Mill Creek City Council. So I have some experience that I bring to the table when it comes to not only local government service, but also in the state legislature, which has given me the ability to balance the different needs and the way that different government organizations interact. And certainly on the county side, there's a lot of work that we do with local governments and with state governments in order to find funding for projects and do joint projects. And so I think my experience in those different roles really suits me well to be positioned to be your county council member for the next year.
Thank you. And the next question goes to Sam. What qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position?
Well, thank you, League of Women's, for hosting this forum. Aside from already being a proven, successful county council member finishing my first term, I have a master's degree in organizational leadership. It gives me formal training I can use and makes me uniquely qualified in proper organizational structure and leadership. Owning and operating a successful small business right here in Snohomish County for a decade helps me understand what small businesses face and the tax burdens placed on working families. I was elected to and eventually leading as council president for the Lake Stevens City Council, helping constituents through local issues. This also gave me a foundation and the experience needed on budgeting, zoning issues, GMA, and in addition to preparing me to be a county council member. My compassionate leadership demonstrated while chair of the Snohomish County Health District while tackling vaping issues also puts me in a leadership position for county council. Thank you.
Now, Ms. Donaghy, the question, what are qualifications and experience make you a strong candidate for this position? If you will unmute.
First again, thank you for having us. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. So I am running for county council for a number of reasons. I'm experienced in working with a diverse group of individuals and being able to communicate in ways that are generally successful. And this is something that I think we need, given the growth and increasing diversity of our county. I'm also a veteran with practical experience in a variety of fields, and I am personally invested here. I had the degree of business from University of Washington, BOPL, and focus in management information systems. I am a community volunteer. I serve in a number of leadership positions throughout the community on boards and commissions, and I am thoroughly focused on making sure that our county is as strong and as resilient as possible.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, we'll start with Mr. Low and move to Ms. Donaghy and then to Mr. Mead. And that's this question, what are the biggest challenges facing the county and what are its greatest strengths?
Well, our biggest challenges for my district is public safety, transportation, and fiscal responsibility. The transportation issues with hashtag #Finish522, the trestle, Highway 2, Highway 9 have been difficult for many years. And my constituents expect to see those fixed, and they want to see those fixed. Public safety is also extremely important, too. We need to see deputies arrive at people's homes when they're called. They don't want to be waiting for 35, 40 minutes, or even an hour or two for a deputy to show up when they're faced with a life or death situation with an intruder. And then fiscal responsibility, my constituents are definitely overtaxed. You know, property taxes have gone up significantly over the past four years, and that's just not good enough. Thank you.
And now we move to Ms. Donaghy. And the question is, what are the biggest challenges facing the county and what are its greatest strengths?
I think probably the greatest issue that we face in the county is community resiliency. And I'll explain what I mean by that. When I talk about resiliency, I talk about community strength and the ability to bend instead of break when an emergency strikes. We saw with COVID that we were not prepared for addressing such a broad issue. And given this... Apologies, given this...
...from calendar, League of Women Voters Forum.
My apologies. So my alerts are off. My computer is still talking. It's just like my son.
And excuse me a second, timer, could you give her about 10 more seconds? Thank you.
Sorry about that. I appreciate your support there. So I think we need to work on community resilience, and that means being able to be self-sufficient and also be able to meet the needs of our community members. There are various ways that we can do that, and it actually encompasses much of what we see every day. It includes addressing the housing crisis so that people are more stable and have a place to be, and decreasing the level of homelessness that we see. It includes increasing the efficiency of our traffic.
Sorry, the timer's up now. I couldn't reset it in time, but...
Oh, sorry. Okay.
No, it's okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry for all that confusion. Okay, now the same question to Mr. Mead. What are the biggest challenges facing the county and what are its greatest strengths?
I think the biggest challenge facing Snohomish County, which definitely affects my district, maybe even more so than the rest of the county, but the whole county is growth. So Snohomish County is the fastest-growing county in the entire state, and I'll fight Pierce County Council members who say anything different. Over the next 20 years, we're estimated to have another 250,000 people move to our county alone. And we're a county that's less than 900,000 as it is, so that's a huge exponential increase in human beings moving here. And so that growth comes with growing pains, things like what Councilmember Low referenced with transportation needs and infrastructure needs, and things like Brandy just brought up, Ms. Donaghy brought up with needs for housing and needs for resiliency as we grow. And so growth absolutely is something we need to focus on. And I think our biggest strength is the fact that our county is a politically purple county. We're willing to work with each other, set aside political differences, and dig through some of these really tough issues together. I think that's what...
Thank you very much. Okay, and we're going to be moving on to the next question. This will go first to Ms. Donaghy, then to Mr. Mead, and then to Mr. Low. Okay, here's the question, what initiatives would you support to address homelessness, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues? Big one, I know.
That is a good question, though. It's a really important one. We need to really start focusing on ways that we can start creating proactive policy to identify the causes of these issues and stop things before they happen. At the same time, we also need to be in crisis mode to address these issues because they are a crisis right now. That means that we need to identify ways that we can work with both public and private organizations to create more access to affordable housing throughout the county and doing it in such a way that is a little bit more creative than what we've been doing previously. Not only looking at multifamily homes, but looking at other options that might have less of an impact on the environment, but also still serve the needs. We need to work on actually creating more beds and more opportunities for people to have access to behavioral health and dependency care because the truth is, we do not have this infrastructure to...
Thank you so much. And now the question moves to Mr. Mead. It is, what initiatives would you support to address homelessness, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues?
So one minute, that's going to be really tough, but I think one of the main things we need to focus on, housing, that's going to help with the cascading effect, all of the other issues that you brought up. I believe in the Housing First concept, which is basically the idea that you're not going to be able to help a person who's dealing with a mental health issue or substance abuse issue or dealing with poverty issues until they have a safe place to rest their head. And so Housing First, and there are so many ways to tackle housing, I could do a 30-minute thing on this, but I think there's two main concepts. One is helping reduce people that end up falling into homelessness. It's much more expensive to find a place to rehouse someone who's become homeless than it is to keep someone in their house. So things like zoning policy that promote density, so we can have more housing stock and more inventory so that the cost is not so high. And then also, the budget is a reflection of our values. We need to invest in our human services in order to help the people who are currently finding themselves homeless, find shelters, get the resources that they need. There's a lot of detail, and that's very broad, but I can't do it in a minute, so...
Thank you for trying, and we'll move on to Sam, the same question. What initiatives would you support to address homelessness, drug and alcohol abuse, and mental health issues?
Well, I really like the Housing Hope Model. You know, I've toured the Housing Hope Center in Monroe. We just opened one in Twin Lakes there. I like the wraparound service model that they have, and I think investing more in that. I have a history of supporting Claire's Place in Everett. I think that's been a great help for homelessness and low-barrier housing. Just recently, we had the two 16-bed facilities at Denny Youth Center that they just opened up on August 1st. In fact, we just, the other day or yesterday, voted for $3 million to go to Linwood to help with their criminal justice center, which will have some treatment there also. And so those are all important. We need those. I think investing in community support centers like Take the Next Step in Monroe, which is something I championed, our embedded social workers program are also necessary, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now this next question, which will start with Mr. Mead, is a related but not completely the same. So I want to give you a chance to answer. If you feel like you've answered in this last segment, that's fine. You just let us know. The question is, what measures would you support to keep housing options affordable in Snohomish County? So somewhat connected, but not completely. And we'll go first to Mr. Mead, then to Mr. Low, and then to Ms. Donaghy.
No, it's great timing for this question. It's almost like you planned the order of your question, so well done. Yeah, housing is absolutely the most important thing for us to be focusing on when it comes to the growth, when it comes to all these other problems that we're talking about. And there's a bunch of ways to address housing affordability. One of the main ones, and what I'm a most proponent of, is trying to prevent people from finding themselves homeless and being priced out of our region. And the way we do that is by increasing the stock of housing in our county. Right now, we have a lot of single-family homes and very little space, i.e. buildable land, to build and develop new housing. And so we need to make sure that with the limited space we have left, we're building the right types of housing, that missing middle housing, the townhomes, the condos, some apartments, and yes, some single-family homes, but not just the single-family homes because there's too many people that are going to be moving here that we have to plan for to only build these $1.5 million houses. So it's about diversifying the stock that we have and finding ways to work with developers with density incentives and things like that to build the right types of housing. That's how we're going to deal with the formal...
Okay, thank you so much. And the question moves now to Mr. Low, and it is, what measures would you support to keep housing options affordable in Snohomish County?
Well, I think Jared articulated it very well, but it is all about supply and demand. And we know that the Growth Management Act squeezes our population into the urban growth areas. And we need to have the right balance of housing countywide. We need to have starter homes. We need to have middle homes, and yes, the upper-end homes, too. But it's all about having the right balance. I think one of the things that we've worked on as a council just recently is ADUs, accessory dwelling units. I have a daughter that just got married in June. She's struggling to find a new home. She's a schoolteacher. Her husband's an electrician. And they can't find a place to buy. They can't afford a place to buy. I think ADUs are a great option for our new families, but also for our senior citizens who don't want to necessarily go into assisted living or senior housing, but want to stay close to the family and live in an ADU. Thank you.
Thank you. And now to you, Ms. Donaghy. What measures would you support to keep housing options affordable in Snohomish County?
I think we need to start looking at different models for housing than we do typically. We have this tendency to look at things like multifamily dwelling units and the single-family homes as one is for lower income, the other one is for those who have more. We need to start looking at things like cohousing communities, tiny homes, and various other options that will help not only create more availability of housing without taking up massive amounts of space. It'll also help expand that community connection and expand the number of actual physical communities that we have, those interactions. The other thing I think we really need to spend some time working on is addressing how our community transit system leaves a lot of spaces that are less accessible because by expanding that, there are more places that we can go.
Okay. And the next question, we'll start with Mr. Low, then go to Ms. Donaghy, and then end up with Mr. Mead. And this question is, what are the issues, if any, in the county arising from the pandemic? How would you address them if you believe such issues exist?
Well, we definitely have issues from the pandemic. You know, obviously, we received CARES Act funding last year. This year and next year, ARPA funding that'll last for a period of four years. And we've taken that as a county council and started helping small businesses, small business grants. One of the early things that we did was we invested that money into our local Boys and Girls Clubs and our YMCA locations for daycares, for our first responders, and doctors, and nurses. One of the things that I championed was food bank funding for our underserved communities. And that was something that I noticed, we didn't have enough funding for this last year. So I brought an initiative before the council to put forward an extra $1 million to those communities. And that was a very successful program in helping people that are struggling with food insecurity. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to Ms. Donaghy. And the question is, what are the issues, if any, in the county arising from the pandemic? How would you address them if you believe such issues exist?
I think that is kind of a loaded question because I think the pandemic has kind of exacerbated every kind of issue that we've had up to now and just makes things worse going forward. In reality, it exposed a lot of the discrepancies that we're already experiencing, and it just highlighted some of the things that we've lost. So moving forward, I think what we need to do is we need to address the real issues of a lack of childcare because so many women have had to leave the workforce. We need to address the number of emergency workers that we have, as well as medical workers. We are really short on the numbers that we need to find in some ways to get more people into those areas. The same stands true for teachers and also the infrastructure for people to be able to access the internet and such in various areas. All of those things I've shown just have been demonstrated to be really lacking during the pandemic.
Thank you very much. And then we'll move to the last person for that question, which is Mr. Mead, and is, what are the issues, if any, in the county arising from the pandemic? How would you address them if you believe such issues exist?
And of course, we've had a lot of issues that have arisen from the pandemic, and I agree with both my colleagues who have spoken now about some of the issues that they're talking about. I think one of the things that I've learned the most throughout the pandemic, and it highlights one of the biggest needs and gaps in our systems, is that we don't have a good way of finding people where they are, meeting people where they are, to figure out what they need. There are so many needs. Ms. Donaghy was talking about childcare and the teacher shortage, and Mr. Low was talking about, you know, the small businesses who are suffering and all of that, and that's absolutely true. But it's been really difficult as a council member trying to figure out how to spend some of the relief dollars to survey the communities and find the people who need most and what they need specifically, whether it's housing issues, mental health issues, the small businesses who are suffering. So I think finding a better way for us to communicate with the public and get feedback on where the needs are is something that we really need to work on, and I think that's...
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to a new question. It'll be Ms. Donaghy first, then Mr. Mead, then Mr. Low. And this question is, what is your strategy for working productively with your council colleagues and members of the public whose ideas are different from yours?
I don't know everything, not even close. Everybody has had different experiences and different education and have learned different things throughout their lives. And because of that, I recognize that the first thing I need to be able to do in order to work with people who may not agree with the same things I do is to actually listen to them. I'm of the opinion that a lot of conflict really comes from the inability to really listen to one another and understand what we're saying. And so we have a tendency to be a little bit more reactive and a little bit more dismissive than we need to be. By recognizing that we all have these differences, by building cultural competency, we can absolutely work with one another efficiently and effectively. Because when it comes down to it, I truly believe that our goal is always to serve in the best interest of our communities.
Thank you very much. And now this question moves to Mr. Mead. What is your strategy for working productively with your council colleagues and members of the public whose ideas are different from yours?
This might be one of my favorite questions, and one of my favorite things to work on in elected office is working with people who I disagree with. Over the last year, one of my council colleagues, Nate Naring, who will be, I think, interviewing with you after this, a Republican who I disagree with policy-wise on a lot of things. If you look at our voting record in the last year and a half, we voted opposite on many, many things over this last year and a half. However, we've been able to respect each other in a way and approach conversations, assuming good intent and understanding that when we disagree, it's okay. It's because we're coming from different perspectives. We've had such success doing that, that we actually have gone around over this last year and done joint presentations to high school government classes, probably 20 of them over this last year, and talked about like civil discourse and how to work together and communicate with people you disagree with. I think that's one of my strongest traits and one of the things I enjoy most about being in local government generally.
And now we move this question to you, Mr. Low. What is your strategy for working productively with your council colleagues and members of the public whose ideas are different from yours?
Well, in my role on the county council, every decision that I want to make, I need the approval of two Democrats or two of my colleagues, whether it's two council members or a council member in the executive. And that's assuming that my seatmate Nate Naring agrees with me. But, you know, one of the first things that I dealt with coming into office with the courthouse project was very divisive. I worked with Councilmember Terry Ryan, and we were able to come to a solution to get the courthouse project, which saved the taxpayers about $100 million. Another thing is, you know, Jared talked about working across the aisle. Jared and I have different political views, and we've never hung out together outside of the office, but I believe my defining moment was working with him last year during the mid-year budget cuts. And I think we both can agree, we built a working trust from that moment of a heated working environment. We came out with a plan that worked for all sides. And I commend Jared for really coming up and working hard on that.
Thank you all for that question. And our next question, which will start with Mr. Mead, then go to Mr. Low, and end with Ms. Donaghy. What are the most pressing environmental issues our county faces, and what would you propose to address them? Mr. Mead?
That's a big question as well. I hate that these are one minute long. So when we're talking about development generally, one of the biggest things that county councils do is comprehensive updates. We do them now every eight years. We change the zonings. We potentially change the UGA boundary lines, and it's to help direct where the growth is going to be. And a lot of that is to protect our environments. Snohomish County, the reason that we have so many people moving here, why we're going so fast, is because we're so unique in what we offer. You have Everett, an urban density core, right next to, you know, 15-minute drive away from a mountain that you could be totally isolated, and forests, et cetera. My district is so much different geographically than District 5, for instance, as far as how it looks, and it's beautiful. And so we have to think about those things when we're doing our zoning, when we're considering our urban growth areas and where we want to focus our transportation projects. So there's so much of it, our creeks, our forests, everything is, it's all... You really have to focus on all of that as a...
Thank you very much. And now we'll move to Mr. Low, same question. What are the most pressing environmental issues our county faces, and what would you propose to address them?
A great question. I ran my own painting business for a decade before taking office. And one of the things that really struck me is going into people's garages and seeing all the stored paint that was there. And so one of the first things that I did as I worked with Executive Summers and doing paint recycling at the county so we could keep all this paint out of landfills and repurpose and reuse paint. One of the big initiatives I worked on this last year, I identified that our sheriff vehicles over the past 10 years have used 3.4 million gallons of fuel. And so I led the effort this last fall to begin the process of electrifying our fleet. And we'll see that over the next two months here, where we'll have a new electric vehicle in the sheriff's office. And hopefully, that will be the foundation for more going forward. And then one of the things I recently did was a conservation futures as chair, saving 15 acres at Haybrook Ridge.
Thank you. And now we move to Ms. Donaghy. What are the most pressing environmental issues our county faces, and what would you propose to address them?
You know, I think it's hard. This is one of those areas where it's difficult to put priorities on things specifically because it all matters, and it all has an impact going forwards. But we can do more than one thing at a time. We have, as we grow, we see a lot of our green space disappearing. And so that is definitely an issue. It impacts our climate. It impacts how our rain reacts with the land. It impacts even our experiences in our growing areas. So that is one thing that I think we need to absolutely consider, how we are impacting our local environment as we are building and creating. Also, we have some amazing waterways that we need to be able to keep clean when we have people traveling all over and stuck in traffic. It's having a major impact on our air quality. Realistically, there's too much to hit in one minute.
Thank you so much. You know, I will jump in here and say to all of you, we appreciate what you do in a minute. It is a long time and a short time, so thank you for all you do tell us, even though it's limited. Okay, we're moving on to the next question, and Mr. Low will go first, then Ms. Donaghy, then Mr. Mead. And this question is, what should our county's plan be to deal with existing or potential... potential racial inequities?
Another great question. You know, I think equal access and fairness to each individual and each people group in our county must be the hallmark of local government and of county government. I think one of the defining moments for me last year was when we had the county council town hall on racial issues. And that was, that was key for me in helping understand some of the inequities that members in our community were facing. Through that process and through Jared's leadership, we, we added more people to the Law and Justice Council, seven new positions. And, and that was a great addition to, to help people that felt like they didn't have a voice have a voice in some of these issues. I regularly attend the Monroe BIPOC group meetings, and I learn a lot from those meetings each month. And I think, as Brandy said earlier, we as leaders, we need to be better at listening, and I think listening is the most important thing that we can do during this time.
Okay. And we move to Mr. Mead for that question. What should be our county's plan to deal with existing or potential racial inequities?
I'm happy to go, but did you want to go with Brandy or Ms. Donaghy first?
I'm sorry, I jumped over. I should have, yes, I missed that. Thank you for telling me. Yes, Ms. Donaghy.
Sure.
I checked you off too soon.
I think there are a number of things that we can do, and nothing is actually going to solve all of the issues that we have, but they can start to move us in the right direction. We need to have our leadership develop greater cultural competency, which means that a basic understanding of how to communicate and recognize variations in culture between different groups that really impact the way that we are able to communicate and react to one another. We also need to start meeting people where they are, and that is recognizing that holding a Zoom doesn't mean that you are inclusive of those who often don't have a voice. It means actually going out to the community, identifying who is being left behind, and making sure that we can work with their community leaders to ensure that doesn't happen again, because so many people are already disenfranchised and feel like they don't have that voice. We need to work at it to fix the problems.
Thank you so much. Okay, now, Mr. Mead, your turn. What should our county's plan be to deal with existing or potential racial inequities?
So similar to my response to our, the biggest problem highlighted with the pandemic, and also similar to what Ms. Donaghy just brought up, is we have historically, as a government, not just in Snohomish County, but governments generally, don't, have not historically done a good job at reaching people where they are, reaching communities that look different than the elected representatives, where they are to hear what the issues are that may matter most to them and how we could positively impact them. And so what Councilmember Low had mentioned about doing the, I think it was like six or seven hours, he can correct me, our town hall, where we listened to the community talk about racial issues, then what came of that was a couple of different policies. One of them, Councilmember Low also referenced, which was adding community members to the Law and Justice Regional Council to advise the Snohomish County Council on things we can do in the law and justice realm. And we've talked through the budget last year, using that information to invest, for instance, more in mental health crisis responders in the law and justice realm. And there's a ton of policies.
Thank you so much for that. And now we move to our final question, where you will have 90 seconds. I know you're not used to that, but I think you will rise to it. And we'll let Ms. Donaghy go first, then Mr. Mead, and then Mr. Low. So Ms. Donaghy, this is the question. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the community?
In 90 seconds?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we have a real opportunity in Snohomish County to start to change the way that we are doing things, because our policy tends to be forward-thinking, as any, you know, good policy has to be. But we are not necessarily being as thorough at identifying all of the ripple effects that policies can have, which ultimately tends to create situations in which we end up in a crisis response, or in, in leaving people behind, which is something that we really should not be doing. Ultimately, we can make our community so much stronger, more effective. We can build our, we can build our economy and build stronger, more resilient communities if we not only learn to work together, but also make an effort to no longer create policy that will impact community members negatively, without also designing a, a way around that. And what I mean is, we need to start really bringing our community members into policy in a way that hasn't happened before, by giving them all voices.
Thank you very much. And now the final question to Mr. Mead. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the community?
So is this also our closing? We want, this is kind of our answer as well. Great, thank you. So the, the main thing I've been focused on this last year, there's a, it's been highlighted through the pandemic, but something I've been passionate about for years, and even more so now that I, my son was born, and my daughter after that, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old and a six-month-old. And my wife and I just went through, because my wife went back to, went back to work last week. She's a school teacher. School started, and we've been struggling to figure out daycare slash trial, early education for our kids, mainly for my son. And that is one of the biggest gaps, I think, we have in our society generally, but specific to Snohomish County as well. In, for instance, in the Edmund School District, 42% of students enter kindergarten not meeting 100% of the, the metrics as being kindergarten-ready. Statistics will show that children who enter kindergarten not at all the standards are more likely to drop out of high school, not go to college, less lifetime earnings, more likely to end up in jail, more likely to die earlier. All of those things can be taught, can be looked at statistically through the lens of how prepared they are going into kindergarten. And yet, we have not made a massive investment, like we have in K-12 with McLeary five years ago, like we did with higher education with Drew Hanson's College Bill two years ago. We have never made a significant investment like that, of that, that, that size in early education. We need to, that needs to be a huge focus. I'm heavily focused on that on the council level, and I think that that should be a focus society-wide. So early learning, early learning, early learning, early learning is the biggest gap that we need to start focusing on that we're not currently.
Great, thank you so much. And now we move the, you get the final word, Mr. Low. What additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of the community?
Well, thank you again for hosting this wonderful forum. It was great to hear from, from both candidates. I think, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but it's public safety, public safety, public safety. Feeling safe in your home and in your community is still the number-one priority. Feeling welcome and treated fairly is also important. My, my community service leadership, both as president of the Lake Stevens Rotary Club and as a private citizen volunteering in my local community, has opened up some unique opportunities for me. I've also, I'm also the current chair of the State Transportation Improvement Board, working directly with transportation funding needs, both locally and across the state, which my district desperately needs. I'm proud to be supported and endorsed by our County Sheriff Deputies Association. They believe I am the right person for public safety. I'm also endorsed by our county firefighters, IAF Local 2597 at Payne Field, and the largest fire district in council District Five, Local 2781, Snohomish Regional Fire and Rescue. I also have the endorsement of our county and city employees, AFSCME Council Two. All these labor groups all endorsed my campaign before the primary vote, and they believe I'm the best person for the job to represent them at the county council. I have the experience and proven leadership, both politically and with my community service, and I have proven I can work collaboratively and effectively with our county council members. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thanks to you all. The League thanks all of you candidates for joining us and for running for office. A recording of this forum and others will be available on the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County website and YouTube channel, and you can find the links at our website, which is LWV, League of Women Voters, snowho.org. We encourage the listeners to explore additional information about these candidates and all others. The Snohomish County Voter Pamphlet will be mailed starting October 11th. Vote411.org, sponsored by the League, is another good source for nonpartisan voting information. General election ballots will be mailed on October 14th, and Election Day is November 2nd. Please vote. And this concludes our forum. Again, thank you all for joining us.